Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sutter Creek City Council to order on December 2nd. We have a quorum with one city council person on Zoom, Julia Cirque. If you will please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just as an item, we would need Councilmember Cirque to put on the record the basis. She is appearing remotely and has, there's two bases, just cause and emergency, I believe, emergency. But I just ask her to briefly put it on the record so that there is a record for her.
Julia, can you do that for us, please?
Yes, I had back surgery three years ago or three weeks ago, and it's still limited to the amount of time that I am able to sit upright. So I spend most of my time in recline. So I would like to attend this by Zoom in order to avoid further discomfort.
Great, I'm glad you could be here on Zoom. To the public forum, at this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The city council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda?
First of all, thanks for letting me speak. Secondly, my name is Victoria Boytano, and I live on Randolph Street.
Put it a little bit closer to your mouth.
Sorry, is that better? I have a loud voice, I didn't want to be too loud. My name is Victoria Boytano, and I live on Randolph Street. And we've been having a little bit of an issue with the parent drop off. And I know that's not really your guys' area of concern, but we're kind of, I guess, at our wits end a little bit. We've gone to some school board meetings and emailed the principal and tried to ask people to slow down. We have a lot of kids and elderly walking and small animals. Over the years that I've lived there, it's gotten progressively worse. The last two years have been pretty intolerable to the point where a lot of our neighbors, the elderly in particular, have adjusted their routines to accommodate this speeding. So we were kind of hoping by coming to you guys, perhaps maybe we could get like a school zone sign, or even a speed bump would be fantastic. We have contacted Sutter Creek Police Department, but they are very short-staffed, so there's not really much they can do as far as police presence goes. The superintendent, he is trying, but unfortunately, it's really hard for him to be there and then also manage all the other schools. So the Fulton Street parking lot is like a staff parking lot, but a lot of parents take their kids to drop them off there, which is fine, but this speeding has just gotten really out of hand. So we're not really sure what to do. I do have proposal signatures here for you guys, just to show that I am not alone. Unfortunately, a lot of my neighbors have kids or are in bed by now for the most part. So there's over 35 signatures in unison for this. So we're kind of hoping maybe you guys could mull it over and help us find a solution that can help give the neighborhood a little bit of peace, while also, you know, letting the people drop their kids off at school as well. So I was kind of hoping you guys could maybe help us find a solution. I can pass out the signature so you can kind of see who's on board with it. Actually, in fact, every house that was in the affected area was on board to get a speed bump or something up there. So, and we're also happy to maybe do some donations on our part, so we can be able to make that happen. That's all, very simple.
Thank you, Victoria. Is that a copy? Can you leave it with the staff and they'll get it to us? Anyone else care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Seeing nobody, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
So I have a little bit different format tonight. I thought, since we're nearing the end of the year, I would kind of do a kind of year in review. So I just wanted to take a moment to kind of review the activities that we've done this last year. I think it's a good chance to kind of look back, see where we are as we start planning for next year. And I also just wanted to thank all the staff for the work they've done throughout the year. So, you know, these are some images from throughout the year, and I've learned that the creek goes from raging to nonexistent. Not yet, maybe. So kind of go through department by department, let's see if I can. Yeah, so in finance, I think, I think we really improved a lot of the core processes during the year. We started doing things like a five-year kind of financial forecast that feeds into the budget process. As you guys know, we're looking at a new software platform, and we've started implementing that. It's going to take probably three or four more months to switch over. Very thankful for the voters passed Measure P, so that will go into effect next year. It won't start until April. We also approved wastewater rates, which helped a lot on the revenue side. We did some other things to help clean up the balance sheet, as you can see here on that slide. You know, in the police department, we went the whole year fully staffed, I think, which really helped a lot. When we're shorthanded, it means we're paying a lot of overtime. It's also difficult for people to take any time off. So even though Officer Rigo and Al Cassius came prior year, they continue to be just a huge asset to have them on staff. Everybody was involved in a major investigation during the year. And in terms of our staffs, the number of traffic stops, citations, and arrests were all up compared to 2023. And, you know, the good news was collisions, major collisions, and no fatal collisions during the year. Collisions were down. In terms of permits, inspections, special events, code enforcement, just have some stats here. 125 building permits, we did 275 inspections throughout the year, 17 special events. And we switched code enforcement, which was being covered by PD at the beginning of the year, over to our building inspector, which I think has really let him kind of solve a lot of issues as he's out doing inspections. He does code enforcement, and been a lot of smaller code enforcement issues that have been handled. We have kind of two large ones that are continuing. The planning department, we had 18 planning applications this year. Five of those are still open or pending. You can see the breakdown. The design review committee had 10 design clearances during the year. We've started this next study for our impact fees, and we responded to the school EIR, as well as the WICLOW way EIR. And then the low-income housing project was approved, but they're still trying to get their funding. They went through two funding periods with the state, and they didn't get funded either time, so.
We know why, Tom?
It's just, I think, a competitive process. In terms of city engineering, you know, we had the two streets that got repaved this year. Some fairly major work on this drainage, storm drain, go for flat. And then the Sutter Oaks sewer collection pipe replacement, which is a pretty major replacement, you know, we're trying to attack the INI. And so this is our first major project. A lot of things happened on the wastewater front. You know, we, with working with Jackson Ranch, we resumed completion of that EDI sewer line extension, which handles everything from the top of the hill. We've had some emergency arson repairs. Dan got these meters installed, so now when the winter storms come, hopefully we'll get much better data on where we're having issues in the storm system. There were a lot of fixes at the wastewater treatment plant itself. I don't know if you want to, since you're here, do you want to talk to any of those?
Yeah, I mean, the process improvements that we did, the recirculation pumps are going to get us more water going through the filter. So even though the filter's old, if you recycle it more times, that helps out with the efficiency of it. So it helps so that we don't discharge anything. The contact chamber, we cleaned that out. We do that about every five years, so we did that this time. We didn't seal it with anything this time because it was just too expensive, but we got some paint in there and kind of gave it a, gave it a short one. And then we had an aerator that had been sitting there for 10, 15 years, something like that. So we just got that back actually today. So that'll be going in, that'll also help with our efficiency out there.
If it's sitting there, not used?
Yeah, just sitting on the side.
You said an aerator?
Mm-hmm.
So that, will that be in the pond there?
That will be in the emergency pond, yeah. We had, I guess, they had three of them initially, but there's no reason for three of them.
Well, I remember that the whole system went upside down one time when they did some aeration.
Yeah, they did, they put too much, too much air into it.
Really upset the whole.
And, and it's a lot of electricity, too, so there's really no reason for that. So one, one will help out, too much is just wasting electricity, so we won't do that. We had a bunch of emergency repairs. The rotor strainers, we just got back in last week, so we're hoping to fix those next week. Sludge conveyor system, we had to rebuild. The headworks, we had to rebuild. Long-term maintenance. Same thing, we did the sludge conveyor. We ordered some chlorine pumps, apparently those take about three months, so we'll get those in. They're kind of acting up, so we're starting to, starting to get through the long list of items that we need to repair. We met with a bunch of wastewater firms. We're getting closer to figuring out where we're going to go for design and construction, maybe. The reservoirs have been emptied to a almost dry, so that's really good for next year. That'll help out with our Henderson underdrain repair. And then we've increased our capital reserves.
When do you do that repair?
We're hoping for fall next year.
In the fall?
We're going to go for bid about April, March or April. Hopefully, we can get some good qualified contractors for that.
We budgeted for half of it in this budget, and we're expecting to do the other half.
Yep, exactly.
So not only was there too much water there, we didn't have the funds, so we're trying to get aligned for next year with these reserves. Yep, and just other things, I guess, public works been working on. You know, you guys saw we completed that energy audit for all the buildings, trying to make sure we're not wasting energy. And storm drain improvements, new fence. Dan and his team have been getting a lot of use out of the striping machine. So we have all new crosswalks throughout town, and they're starting striping parking and other things. And then Dan also got this, this firm that did Main Street, now they went down, was it Boston Broad?
Broad, yeah.
Yeah, smoothing out the sidewalks, just to really avoid trip hazards, which, you know, protects the city from liability. And it was much, much cheaper than trying to put in these sidewalks. And then kind of way back when we both started, cleared out Flushing Dam and the creek. And I had really good news today, our creek permit finally arrived, so we can start to get into the creek and pull up some of the RuPauls and things.
So it gives us the authority to do what we want to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Now, on the Parks and Rec side, we reopened the Monteverde Museum, which had been closed for a while. Started to have some community events with the pool party and a concert in the park. It's been repaired to the pool itself, and then the school district also repaired the pool building. And, and Dan also got the ability to have volleyball nets in the auditorium, so we actually have volleyball teams that are renting the auditorium this year. And then again, I already mentioned it, but, and you, you all did a lot of work. It took, it was really almost the whole year we worked on this local sales tax. And very happy to see that pass, so we're going to start to build that into our capital budgets going forward, primarily for streets. Starting, starting to work on economic development, been reaching out to property owners on Main Street. And we talked last week about, about the, getting some grants for job creation. We got the 18.3 acres of land donated. And I wanted to point out, we don't have any outstanding lawsuits with the city, which is a good place to be. And we've been trying to really increase transparency by getting the agendas out earlier, communicating through newsletter and through social media, and just trying to be more accessible, you know, as a city. So, you know, at a high level, I'd say things, things are going, are going well. We've got one last meeting for the year to kind of certify the official election results. There's some things that you guys will have to pass related to the local sales tax. We'll also swear people in and kind of get reorganized, I think, at the next meeting. You guys can choose the mayor and vice mayor, and we can hit the new year kind of ready to go. And it's like last year, I'd like to do an off-site kind of prioritization meeting. And so I just wanted to kind of go through that, kind of show you guys kind of, you know, what got done in the last year. Wanted to say, you guys have been a big part of that. I think you guys are a great council, you work together well. So thank you for that, and I look forward to working with all of you, kind of going into 2025. So do you guys have any questions?
I do. So first of all, thank you very much. And yeah, it's, it's an impressive list of accomplishments, hats off to everybody, honestly. What I wanted to say was, Tom, in, in the areas where you're capturing metrics, where there are metrics in past years and things like that, I just want to suggest that let's get those lined up so that when we look at them, we can actually see the compare and the growth or the whatever is going on and put it in some kind of context. I love the metrics, and it's always fun to be able to see them and compare them year to year. Number of permits, this, that, the other thing gives us a sense of where we are.
Yeah.
You mentioned it, you know.
Not one in particular, I knew I didn't have a comparison for you guys, but next year we will.
I just want to say, I think that we started this year off right, Tom, with you leading us in that prioritization process over at ACTC. And I look forward to doing that again in the context of all that's been done this year and how we can springboard off of that, so I look forward to that. Thank you for having that as part of your process with the council.
I'll echo those sentiments. And also, I got to say, that picture is illustrative of the condition of a street. Which is pretty bad. It's historic. I guess, yeah.
Like a song on the corner of church in Maine.
I have to admit, I stole this one off the internet.
I agree with what everyone said. You know, I've been kind of keeping a list myself, and it's, we've come a long way. We've accomplished a lot, you guys have accomplished a lot, many thanks to the staff. And I think that there's also, I mean, you can't give Dan a matrix, but there's just a good feeling in town. There's a lot of local people at the events and on Main Street participating in the city, and I think that's always a positive sign.
Yeah, I want to say thank you to you all as well, and I feel very happy with your guys' responsibility and professionalism. Makes it a lot easier, I think, for all of us.
You guys, one quick question for Dan. Do you have any sense of, in that pipe replacement project at Sutter Oaks? Were we replacing a lot of tile pipe, or is it?
It was, it was a bunch of clay, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how much, but.
But, okay.
Yeah, I, I know the guys used to say that those were frequent flyers, is what they call them, so they would be up there all the time. So there's a, there's a bunch of problems that I haven't heard of since we redid that, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Well, and we didn't replace them, right? We didn't pull out, we just put something inside.
Yep.
Did the, anyone in the public have a question for Tom, or a comment on the year in review? Moving on, we need to approve the minutes from November 18th.
I have one correction, I believe, from that meeting. In the minutes, it said that Jim made a comment regarding, I don't have them in front of me, regarding discussion of the short-term rentals. Well, I believe I was the one that, that asked the question, and now I can't. It would be on page seven, under Mayor and Council Member Reports. It says, "Councilmember Swift reported updates on the bike pit project."
Okay.
That, that would be my only, not to take anything away from you, Jim. I'm sure you had something to say and notes to make.
I'll take no credit.
Okay, if that's all, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure, move to approve.
There's a motion and a second, I think we'll have to do a roll call vote, Tom?
Yep, Councilmember Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Gunsman.
Aye.
Councilmember Swift.
Aye.
Councilmember Feist.
Aye.
And Councilmember Cirque.
Aye.
All right, so it passes five up.
Hey, next is the public hearing. Since we have some folks here from ACES and Republic, did we want to move nine up? Does anyone have a problem with that?
I don't.
You guys good with that? Okay, we're going to jump to number nine, the administrative agenda. Nine A is the notice of the upcoming hearing on solid rate increases.
Well, I can, we will be moving forward with a rate increase. This is to implement the rate schedule that was performed through the detailed rate analysis, which is sort of the most comprehensive analysis that is done every four years. Our agreement needs a little bit of a tweak. What our practice has been for the past, I think, 10 years or so is, based on some agreements we did back in that era, is to tie the city to the county. So ACES does a detailed rate analysis, both of the county rates and the city rates, and achieves an economy of scale. So that's what it has done, and the rate schedule that you see that will be proposed to the ratepayers is the culmination of that. We will be presenting it to the ratepayers, and then there will be a protest hearing. I think we did one of these about a year ago. So that will come to you in February. And all we're doing tonight is just, this is just an FYI, this, this process will go forward. There will have to be a hearing. Anyone who has an objection has a right under Prop 218 to state their objection and deliver it in writing, if that's their pleasure, again, as we have done in the past. So this is just a FYI, in case, you know, as a council, you start hearing about this from your constituents, and that because they're getting the notice in the, in the mail, we just wanted to let you know. So I don't know, Tom, if you have anything else.
Well, I think this is a change, too, in that they're asking for multi-year approval.
Right.
So we will have to do this every year.
Right. Can I ask a couple of process questions and maybe a little bit more than that? Because, you know, I've been sitting here just for a year now, so. Just to make sure I understand what you just said, are you saying that the proposed rate is not just for Sutter Creek? It's for everyone who serviced within the county?
No, it is just for Sutter Creek.
Oh, so this, they're doing it once?
Yeah, what we're saying is that when they, they do a detailed audit every four years of their, of their expenses, so that they can determine a rate, you know, and obviously, they can describe better cost of fuel and other heavy equipment and other things. So what they do to achieve an economy of scale is they do their analysis. They use the same, I think, forensic accounting firm to do the county analysis, the city of Sutter Creek analysis, and achieve an economy of scale. But we will only charge rates specific to the city.
I understand, thank you. And the second part of my question was, again, so if I read it right, and if this is not the appropriate time to be asking these questions, you guys let me know. But in, in looking at the 10%, if I read it right, 10% increase over the next four years, resulting in a 40% hike over four years, that seems steep. And I wondered, is that similar to the way it has been? Is that greatly different? And I'm just looking for some background.
Yeah, I, I would defer to, to them as far as the cost factors. They have the analysis, and our practice has been, when we do the hearing, to bring that analysis to you, so that you, as a council, have that, so you understand why the rates are as they are. You know, I, I will leave it to them in terms of explaining.
Yeah, I don't want to put people through.
The cost factors in their industry.
And just to be clear.
I think, hang on, before you guys respond to Dan, why don't we hear? I have some questions, and Jim does, too, so maybe you can hear them all.
I just want a clarification that the analysis for Sutter Creek is specific to Sutter Creek.
Yes.
Because obviously, the houses are closer together, and there's, so all those factors are be specific to Sutter Creek.
Correct.
Thank you.
Julia, did you have a question?
Yes, actually, I have two. And again, if this is not the, not the place I see Paul on the stand. And one is that, I'm, I don't, I'm looking at the chart, and if, for example, for the 32-gallon weekly pickup, the current rate of 38.01, the monthly rate adjustment, which means the new rate would be 40.20, but 38.01 and the rate adjustment of 182 comes up to only 39.83. And that's pretty consistent, I think, not the, the same percentage, but the difference, the, the monthly rate adjustment does not match up to what the actual new rate is listed here. So I'd, I'd like that to be answered. And then the second is, and Derek, you might have said, I, I might not have heard you, is when was the last proposed rate increase from ACES?
We raised rates that were in effect for this year. I think we did that earlier this year, so they, they got their 2024 increase, but it was, I think, in the, when, the early part of the year. So the rates that you see at the left-hand column are are the current rates.
Correct.
The last time we did that was earlier this year.
Okay.
I, we will check with the, the ACES folks to give us the break. I do, I apologize, I do see the monthly rate adjustment doesn't, if you add column, the, the current monthly rate column to the monthly rate adjustment column, it does not add up to.
No, and that's consistent all the way down.
Okay, we, we will address that.
I.
Thank you, Derek.
So I've been here for four and something years, and I've seen you guys in this room three or four times. I know we discussed the franchise fees, and I thought we had already approved the rate increase schedule. There were multiple years, and then there was another process we went through. Maybe you guys can refresh my memory where I thought there was some sort of inflationary index established. RMA, thank you. So I, I was surprised to see this show up again. I thought we had just gone through it. So I guess my suggestion would be to you guys, when we do have the actual hearing for all of this, to have, to have the schedule of previously approved increases and, you know, what we had done.
Sure. The, the, the rates that are in place for this year were approved months ago, were part of what you're referring to as the RRI. That's what you do when it's not a detailed analysis here. So that's what the current rates were, so they were approved earlier this year. Going forward, the 10% is a cap. Doesn't mean that that's what the rates will go up to. It may go up 1%, it may go up 0.5%, it may go up 8%, but that's a cap, so that's not a guarantee that the rates will rise 10% for the next four years.
So my question, if, the detailed rate study has not yet occurred.
The detailed rate study has been done.
Oh, it has? So is this, is this what the rates we're looking at, or this chart that we're looking at, is that based on the detailed?
Yes.
The detailed study?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought that was yet to be done, I'm sorry.
So the detailed rates, or was it every three years? Every four years, so in four years, then, well, another detailed analysis will be done. Four years from now.
Okay.
So in the column that says, "New Rate Year, 1 asterisk," and just look at the top line item, for instance, at 4382, it says, "That's not to exceed that." But, so what is the rate going to be then, if you're not going to do another detailed one for three years?
Well, then, the next, the next four, the next three years are RRI adjustments, basically cost of living adjustments on the rate index that's specific to garbage companies. So it looks like that these, the new year in 2026, I think that's, that's a guess, that so that it's, looks like it went up by 10%, but it's not going to go up, it's not going to, we don't know what it's going to be until we do the RRI next year.
So the way it would work is, you know, will, if the council approves, there's not a protest, and the council approves the rates that start on March 1st, those will be the rates that will apply in 2025. And then at some point in 2025, ACES will do the rate, the RRI index, they will tell us what that is. If it's not more than 10% and the new rates they propose for 2026 are not more than $43.82, then what that means is that we can simply bring an administrative item to the council and just say, "These are the rates," and bring a resolution to you without having to do the mail ballot process.
If in fact, RRI demonstrates that that should be the rate.
So that answers my question, because I thought Tom said we'll be doing this every year. We don't do a 218 every year.
What, what we will do every year is, they will have to come before you and present to you what their RRI was, and then you, as a council, will have the ability to hear them, and then I will prepare a resolution. But it won't be a Prop 218, as long as we don't go over $43.82 in 2026, and $48.20 in 2027, and so on. So what that does is it simplifies the process so that we can get one Prop 218 process for four years, so that we don't have to do the mail ballot process again until, basically, till 2029.
And we did this previously.
We did one, yes, we did, we did one, five, this was probably way back in 2014, Jim, when you were, you were on, we did an index, and then, and so we did do that.
Detailed, and then pre-approved.
Right. Last year's was an RRI increase.
Last year was just the RRI, was a one-year RRI.
And I think that's clear, what you were thinking of, this, the multiple years of RRI increases, they do the study every four years, but those increases weren't pre-approved the way they're asking to do this now. But it's really the same process as before, it's just you don't have to do the 218 process.
It's more efficient.
Right.
If that's your pleasure.
Right, and the 10, and the 10% asterisk note, so as a, as a business, you just look at that RRI history, and you try to think forward, and you think, well, what's a number that we could put in here where we're, it's going to work, this process is going to work?
Well, we'll look at, well, there's, there's several in that rate, RRI index, specific to waste collection companies, such as now Republic Services, you know, insurance, fuel, landfill costs, all of, those are the things that go into the RRI, so that'll be crunched.
What's the highest RRI we've had in the last five years?
Hmm, probably.
9.6%.
So it got close.
Last, it was last year.
It got close to that 10.
Yeah.
That's what I was kind of wondering, is, has it ever gotten close?
And we, and for, for a year from now, we don't, we don't know yet.
Sure, yeah.
Just to piggyback off of last year's at 9.6%, that's based off of 2022 financial data.
I remember.
And that's when fuel really hit us.
I remember that.
That was why that RRI was the highest. Yeah, so just something to keep in mind.
Just one other thing, too, I think the reason the numbers don't add up is because that's a 12-month monthly increase, but we're not doing the increase until March, so it's over nine months. So just like last year, we, we missed the date, and we, we did the 12-month increase over nine months, that's kind of happening again this year.
Which jacks up the percentage.
Which makes the total.
Because it was compressed, so, yeah.
I have a question, what was the, the rate increase when the rates went up in 2024? Do you know what the rate increase percentage was?
The 9.6.
9.6%? Thank you.
Are you guys here as Republic now, or are you still here as ACES?
Well, as of November 1st, Republic has taken over ACES Waste Services.
Republic, Paul.
Yes, so Republic Services. So I, I'm Paul Malinelli Jr., formerly of ACES, and now I'm the Community Relations Manager for Republic. This is Johnny Plasse, he is now the Operations Manager for Republic, formerly the AGM of ACES. And in the corner over there is Kelly Johansson, he's the General Manager. And of course, all of you remember Paul Malinelli Sr., who is now a consultant for Republic.
So I do recall when we did the RRI last, we, I think Robin was on the council, and I remember him taking great care with it, and it was in there that the costs can also go down. So you were just talking about the gas going way up in 2022 or whatever, and it has yet gone down. So the RRI can go both ways, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that, right.
Okay, so you don't need anything from us? You're just here to inform us?
I have a quick question. So this is a little off-topic, but I was just in Folsom and learning about their green waste program, and I know it's probably more complicated here because our population is less, but they have a pretty robust program that they're actually incorporating food scraps into the green waste, and then it does have to be, I think it's a California law, it then has to be picked up once a week, possibly. I haven't done any research on it, but I wondered if that's something you guys have ever looked at?
Well, the, the law that implemented the green waste collection programs, SB 1383, Amador County is exempt from having a collection program. And that exemption was, I believe, was signed into law by Governor Newsom some time ago that extends it out another 10 years. So Amador County, including Sutter Creek and all of every other city in Amador County, does not require to do a food, a program.
Oh, so that was legislated, they are doing that?
Right. Right.
But, but to be clear, they, they do do, they do have a recycling portion component to what you do.
Right.
Just not the food.
Right, well, the, the, there's, like, I call them, like, we have to change the color of can lids.
Pick up yard.
We pick up green waste, and we pick up green waste, that's not going to change. Well, that'll continue.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public have questions for Republic? No one's in the public? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Refuse rate index, yeah. Yeah, I said RMA, RRI.
You too.
Same to you.
See you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, indeed, to you all, too.
Okay, 9B is being continued to another time?
Let's go back to eight.
I am.
Okay.
After 9A is 9B. We were on Administrative Agenda. Item eight, ordinances and public hearing. Tom's excited, you take it.
This is Derek's meeting today.
I'm not able to hear Derek.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Julia, my microphone is off. So as I was explaining, Measure P has passed, and as a condition of the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration collecting our tax and administering it and remitting it to us, we are author, we are required by their rules and law to enter into agreements with them, and these are agreements by which they will collect our tax. They will do the initial setup, so there's a setup agreement, as I like to call it, and then there's the administration agreement. The setup agreement is how they will, you know, get the system up and running so that they could start collecting it, which they will start doing in April of 2025, and then the administration agreement governs how they will collect it. These are standard form agreements. These are the agreements that every city adopts. So I've reviewed these, I'm fine with them. I'm not sure, even if we had concerns with any provision, that they would agree with that, because these, they, they, they have to keep their agreements standard. So what we are asking for is just really the administrative part of the success that we had at the ballot, and that is to authorize the agreements. There is a, so there's one resolution that will approve those two agreements, then there's a second resolution, and this is the agreement that allows for the examination of sales tax documents. So sales tax records are proprietary, and obviously vendors don't want that just floating around, but we, we need that, obviously, to understand and enforce our ordinance and make sure that it's, you know, money is, taxes are collected the way they are supposed to. And so this agreement allows for CDTFA to release information to our city manager and to any person he designates, our finance staff. And then there's also a provision, a lot of cities do this, and we've done this as well, where we can authorize other purposes for which we want sales tax information. So a lot of times, cities will do economic development, they will do budgeting and planning, and they'll need that data to understand and do projections about what kind of money's going to come in, and what, you know, what they can do with that money, and what other sources they might need to do certain economic development. So what we have done is we have specified other purposes that we can use the data for. Now, we still have to make it, preserve its confidentiality, and that's what this agreement does. So these are really pretty administrative, rote actions, but they are required. Tom and I have been working with the CDTFA folks, they're actually very good, they're very helpful people, and that's what is before you tonight.
Let's see. So, yeah, I understand that, that when they're not, we're not looking to change anything, but I do need to just get a little bit better educated, if you don't mind, I'll ask you just a couple of questions here. I'll start with the $175,000 estimate not to exceed, and just try to make sure I understand what is that referring to? Is it part of the original setup? Is it the year-to-year? And what is that number based on? And, because I have no experience in this, so I'm trying to figure out, well, now, did we just, is this going to be every year? We're going to pay that much money to have this thing administered? What, what's the deal? So let's, I'll just stop there and give you a chance to respond to that.
To the agreement, I'm sorry.
The preparatory agreement? Is that what you're looking at?
Fee Administration.
The amount to be paid by city for the department's preparatory cost shall not exceed $175,000.
So that, that is a, I don't know the number. I suspect that's probably much higher, because this is a scaled-up version that they would apply for any city. So I, unfortunately, I do not know, I think that's a standard provision they have. That's just, that's a, that's a statutory cap, there's a reference to a revenue and taxation code section there. So the legislature has basically put that cap in. I do not have any reason to believe that is the amount they'll charge us, but I don't know.
Okay, is that something we can just get some, a little more information on as we're going through this process? Because people are going to start asking, well, how much is it costing to administer this? And I'd like to be able to answer that.
That's fine.
And also, if it's a one-time setup, as Dan had asked earlier, if it's an annual expense that we're, this particular.
That's the preparatory cost. So that's the setup fee. That's not, that's not, that's not an every, the every year would be in the second agreement, and.
Oh, that's under compensation?
Yeah, and then I think that's, that's the amount as provided by law, so they, they have a fee scheduled, so we can, we can ask them what the, let me put a note in my.
Yeah, just to get a better sense.
So I can ask. I can, I can ask them what.
So that kind of answers one of my questions. So Claire, do you want to just go down the line, or just as we have questions?
Why don't you go ahead, since you're.
Okay. So, yeah, I, as reading through that, it seemed to me, and I would like, as Dan said, some better education or more detailed education, it seems like there are two fees, the preparatory cost fee, not to exceed, according to this document, $175,000, and then Article IV in the last document, where it talks about compensation, that the city agrees to pay to the Department of State, costing of administering the city ordinance as provided for by law. Such amount shall be deducted from taxes collected by the department for the city. So my question, and I think you hinted on this, Claire, is that annual? Is that going to be applied quarterly? Power dispersments from the department going to be made to the city? On what kind of period basis? So I understand that those deductions will be made each payment that the state sends to the city. Is that correct?
I, I've never gotten into this level of detail. I am more than happy to ask those questions.
Okay, great.
And make sure that, you know, the council, those are all very good questions, and I think, obviously, we want to know, you know, if they're going to take all the money we raise from, from the tax, it doesn't do us any good, but they don't do that. I know, yeah, I know, I know that, that that's not, but we can find out, we can, I'm sure they can give us estimates of what they will be and when they will take them and how it will work.
And, and I'd like to know how those estimates are determined, whether it's on, what type of scale, what's its, is it based on the percentage of tax revenue that was brought in? Is it based on an anticipated flat amount? Is there some predetermined scale? How that amount is determined? I'm curious.
Those are great questions, and I will.
Probably just a fixed amount that, that every.
Yeah, they might, they probably have a rate schedule.
Yeah.
And it may depend on the amount of cap, but we will find that out. Those are all very good questions that.
And then, and then my last question is, and it goes back to the very beginning of that, that first document, when it talks about, the Department of TFA also requires the cities identify staff members who are authorized to inspect the records that agency gathers from vendors who collected the sales tax. Part, part of, a big part of our promoting this Measure P is that we would have a community representative, former Sheriff Martin Ryan, to spearhead kind of an oversight committee. So my question is, what will Martin Ryan's role be, given that it, this is very specific to city staff only having access to the information?
Julia, just to, this is referring to individual businesses' sales. It's, it's the table of how much they bring into their register and how much they pay taxes. That's, that's the confidential part. So the, the total amount of money that we bring in from this measure would be something that the oversight committee would look at. So Martin Ryan would not need to in any circumstances, or many of us in most circumstances know which tasting room brought in more than.
Got it. Good. That's, yes. I think that's important. But there would still be that, that oversight that we could still provide.
Yes. So the council, I mean, keep in mind, this is a general tax.
Yes.
Meaning the reason we were able to do it at a 50% plus one rate is that the money is general revenue, which means it cannot be allocated for just one or two or limited purposes, which means the council will always have the authority subject to the former sheriff as an advisor to set the priorities for how the money is spent. And that would be true every year going forward.
I, I would just, are you saying if, could a city specify that, that even though it's a general tax, that it could be used? They could decide that their first priority, whatever that priority is, that 100% of that tax would go towards that? There's no requirement to say that that has to be spread out over different.
So when we set our budget next year, you'll start having revenue. You'll be able to project what the revenue will be for the next fiscal year. You, as a council, can say, okay, we've got $530,000 coming in annually now from our, our sales tax. And this year we want to apply it towards X, Y, and Z. You will absolutely have that right. The key, though, is that you will have that right going forward every year. And so when in next year of your council makes that decision, a new council sitting in your seats four years from now could make a different decision. That's the point about it being a general tax.
But the spending of the tax is not agendized. I think we're getting off topic here. Neither is the oversight committee. We're just looking at the administration. I think Dan has a couple more questions. I want to throw one in there while my mouth is moving. Well, this administration that they're doing involves making sure everyone who should be paying sales taxes in Sutter Creek is paying sales tax? Do you, do you know if that's part of it?
I believe enforcement is, is separate.
It's our, it's our responsibility. They, we will be able to determine who is not paying taxes based on the information they give us. And then we would have the right, under the code that we've adopted, to pursue collections or pursue enforcement. There are, there are ways to do that.
Which is the same as it is now.
But we request the state to do the enforcement. They would, they would go out. They have a tax enforcement division, I believe.
Well, it seems like it would become a part of people's general sales tax report. Because there's on mine, I'm not in a city, so you have the state tax, and then there's a separate line item for county tax. So this would then become a separate line item. So this, if they weren't paying sales taxes, sales, the state would be looking at them overall. So it probably won't fall on us to make sure that, I mean, that, because the, all your credit card gross receipts go to the state. So they have reports on who's not paying. I mean, they, they make sure you pay your sales tax.
Yeah, if you own a business that's collecting tax, you have to, you have to report monthly. So.
But I was going to say something with that regard because it's self-reporting. So one thing I think, I don't know that the state will notify people of this, but I think we might need to, to do some sort of education process to the vendors in town to raise their tax. Because if you don't put it into your point of sale, then the quarter will come up and you'll put in your, you know, your gross sales. And it'll calculate the sales tax. But if you didn't adjust it in your point of sale, you're then going to be liable for it regardless, but you won't, you won't have collected it. So we might want to, I don't know if the state will notify people, but that would, you know, people would have to take the 1% out of their pocket until they figured out.
Yeah, I think the state does that as part of.
That's probably part of that setup process is notifying.
Notification.
In the area.
But it might just be like one note in a state envelope that looks a lot like all the other envelopes. So I don't, it might be something that we might want to send our own flyer just because it, you know, there are a lot of small business people in this town that might miss to implement it.
Just a quick follow-up question I had on this, this notion of us being able to really understand the money that came in as a result of measure P versus regular sales tax. It looks to me, as I read this thing, it, it says, under the agreement, quote, "Money collected pursuant to this ordinance may be deposited into the state treasury to the credit of the retail sales tax fund." So all that money, it looks like, is going to show up in one bucket. Derek, do you know, or if you don't, can you find out? Will we actually have the ability to track specifically what came in as a result of measure P? Versus the whole, or is it just going to be a bigger check than it would have been otherwise from the state? And we'll have to do some kind of calculation and try to determine it ourselves.
In other words, money that, because we get other, we get money, there's already a sales tax that we get.
Exactly.
The Bradley Burns sales tax. So, okay.
Yeah. Because it looks like it's going to go into one bucket. But, and I don't know if during the setup, if this is something we say is important to us, whether or not they would have an option of just turning that button on and, and generate a report automatically distinguishing.
Okay, I can find that out.
Yeah.
I would think because it will be a line item on people's reports. Whether or not it's confidential would be interesting.
Derek, the other thing, there's, there's this paragraph about preference, and it says, you know, unless, except otherwise, you know, we agree with the preference of them doing X, Y, and Z. I just didn't know what the heck that meant. Paragraph preference, it's, it's labeled preference. According to the notes I took. Page 14 says. It says it shall give no preference in applying money received for the state sales tax uses, state administration, blah, blah, blah. And I just, I don't know, when I read something like that, I just have no idea what it means. It makes me curious. Well, I know why I care is because it says unless we instruct them to do otherwise. And so it made me think, well, would there ever be a reason we would instruct them to do something otherwise? But I can't answer it because I don't know what it is. That was why I wanted to raise it.
I can understand with that, with that.
And if, you know, you get back to us with, you know, if you just want to include that in the list of things to come back, that's fine.
I could do a report the next meeting.
Yeah. It's on a paragraph called preferences, Susan, on page 14, I think. Claire, did you say?
Yeah, it looks like they're saying that the money they collect, which has to be distributed to all these different agencies, unless we.
Yeah, unless we want to, yeah, so it just right at the end there.
We want ours first. Can we instruct them for that?
Well, it's just, and then, and this will be my last. What's our preference? The, the last one I had was under annexation. It's H, paragraph H, I think. And it says, give effect. It talks, it's, it uses the word give effect, and I didn't know what that meant. Does it mean if we annex something, it's automatically going to?
That means, for instance, annexation, what it's saying is the date of incorporation into our city limits, when we take in unincorporated property.
Yes.
Maybe set for purposes, our purposes of it becomes officially city property based off of, you know, LAFCO procedures. But the date that the CDTFA starts collecting from businesses that are points of sale within their area will, will take effect when, and then they specify the first day of the calendar quarter. So if the quarter starts on May 1st, if, if, if the effective date of the annexation is February 15th, then.
It's going to wait until May to start.
Yeah, then on April 1st is when the sales tax will start being collected.
Thanks. Appreciate the clarification. That's all I had.
Any other questions for Derek on this?
So after these resolutions, next, next meeting, we can answer some of these questions. And then there's the ordinance that the voters approved, that I think you guys will have to approve.
Okay. Do we have to approve these tonight? These, yeah, and then you.
I would, I would ask that we approve these tonight. I will provide answers at your next meeting. And then we will, we will adopt a resolution recognizing the election. Because we will need, and then we'll need to sign the, the ordinance. We have a whole package of things we have to send off to CDTFA by the end of the month.
If there aren't any other questions or discussion, I'd hear a motion to approve. Can we do them at once, or do you want them separate?
You can move item 8A, which would entail.
Says resolutions, approval of resolutions.
Yes. So if you move item 8A, that's going to approve both resolutions, which will in turn will approve the two agreements and then the examination. Authority.
I'll move 8A.
I second.
Here's a motion in a second. Tom, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Serk.
Aye.
Councilmember Feist.
Aye.
Councilmember Swift. Mayor Gunsmen.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reardon.
Aye.
Hey, thank you, Derek. You're on the hot seat tonight. Item 10, mayor and council member reports. Julia, do you want to go first?
Yes, thank you, Tom. In your pockets, Thomas included some of the maps. When we did our last, when the Bike Ped Committee did our last walk, we kind of had this novel idea of staying away from posts and signage. And go towards using rope stencils. One, it's more probably visible for cyclists. Two, it keeps posts and diggings, and it's much easier to apply. So we worked backwards on the last walk, starting at Spanish Street. And we, in this package, it gives you the pictures and the location of where the stencils would be. Now, the stencils, and I've seen other cities use these, and they're very visible without being obstructive to any of the other environment, which is really kind of nice. So the, the very first one is the large map of image one. Image two shows an example of a bike stencil and a narrow. We could or we could not have the, kind of the dotted line. That's irrelevant. But then when we go into image three.
Julia, just to interrupt you on that one. So again, I think the idea here is out in the county, they would take what's a two-lane road and maybe make it look like a one-lane road with bike lanes.
Yes.
But it's dotted so cars can pass.
And that's the advisory.
Yes.
This would be out in the county, the night.
Yeah, right.
And then in town.
The, excuse me, so the backroads would become one lane with a.
Where it's, where it's real.
It gives us space for bikes. If there are no bikes, it can be two lanes still.
Yes.
No.
No, there's no middle line there now.
No.
There's no paving out there. I mean, no painting. So you can ride a bike in Sutter Creek on any street currently. So what is?
This is to.
What's it accomplished to have a stencil on, on the pavement?
What we're trying to do is, one, connect Sutter Creek to Amador City. Safely increase bike and pedestrian pathways even with our, within our own city. And for the cyclists that come into town, that want to come through town, say, down a Sutter Volcano Road into town onto Church Street. How to get them through town without having to clog up or face any of the risks in tight traffic going down Main Street? So trying to get cyclists in the summertime through town safely. And at the same time, at two intersections specifically, being able to increase some safety for our own pedestrian traffic. So it's, it's twofold.
I just don't see where a stencil of a picture of a bicycle on the, on the roadway that is being shared with cars is going to accomplish any.
Well, it wants, we want to direct any cycle traffic out of downtown. So coming through, getting him on to Spanish Street. So it's more just an assistance to, to the cyclist saying, instead of going straight ahead, turn here on Spanish, up on Amelia. And then the intersection of north of Amelia and Old Highway 49 is probably the more complicated intersection because we're talking about adding a crosswalk and being able to get cars through town with the awareness or into town with the awareness that there could be some bike and pedestrian traffic that are coming up to go on to Amador Road and take the back way into Amador City. So the stencils are, are, is it probably unobtrusive, obtrusive as you can get? We're still giving some direction to cyclists, you know, on how to get through our town. Yeah, anybody could go anywhere if you wanted to ride a bike down Main Street and trying to get up over Humbug Hill and into the narrow part of town and negotiate Gopher Flat. But by going down Spanish Street and giving them the direction then to go up North Amelia really averts a lot of risks and hazards. So we're, we're trying to make something also welcoming for people who are cyclists to be able to come into our town, knowing they can still get into Amador City safely. And, and make it, you know, another aspect of being able to provide a service.
I have one more question with regard to the backroad to Amador City, and I'm all for bike lanes. Walking, and I walk that road quite a bit, and there's so many narrow spots on it that are kind of blind. I'm just wondering what you guys spoke about with regard to.
We, we had talked about, and that's in a county. So the, the city, we just had some like advisory comments. We, we would like to add either some flashing signs, the share the road signs, you know, to make cars aware and autos aware that, yeah, there's, it could be bicyclists or pedestrians. We had talked about having two-way lights within a section gets really narrow as you go down into off Amador Road and in, in the backside where it really drops off to be able to have a flashing light, like, you know, approaching cyclist or something like that. So right now, my focus here tonight is just to be able to bring what our thoughts and what our ideas were for downtown and for the side streets for Sutter Creek.
You know, again, this is ACTC and this bike pedestrian group. You know, personally, my opinion, you know, in terms of signs versus paint on the road, rather than have a bunch of signs throughout town to say, here's the preferred route, it seemed like maybe the stencils on the road would be less obtrusive.
Exactly. And it's, and it's probably a third of the cost. It's, it's very cheap for some stencils and some paint. It's a lot cheaper than trying to dig posts and put up signs that also block the views, you know, and trying to keep downtown clean. And, and if, if, you know, to be honest, if you're, I'm riding my bike and going down Spanish Street. I'm looking down at the road. I'm not going to look up at a sign to, you know, see the condition of the road or whatever. So I, that's why we think it's actually a safer way as well.
So Julia, if you could back us up a little bit. When, oh, gosh, I don't know, 18 months or so ago, I think, when Ellie Root had the town hall here and was the nexus of this, right? Okay. And ACTC has some real cash, like serious money for bike ped improvements for shovel-ready projects. Is, is this, is this?
This could be considered a shovel-ready project because we don't have to use, at least for the shovels for the city part. The big part will be, and the more expensive part will be back in the county between the two city limits on Amador Road and then going into town. So that's where. So, that's where, and there, there could be some, you know, consultation and engineering involved, but at the minimalist end on ours. So, we, we don't have a fixed cost yet and nor can, and this still has to be passed, you know, a dance that's on the council. This still has to be passed by ACTC and then I think the final decision is still the Board of Supervisors.
To clarify a couple of things, Julia, because I'm not sure I understand exactly where we are now. The last time we were here, we talked about we'd do a simple design and then John said that he would take that to someone who would come back and give us an estimate for how much that-
Correct.
Is this our design for that estimate?
Correct.
So, this is what you plan to take to John?
Correct.
And then at that point, we'll find out, are they willing? See, because they, my, my next question is, are they willing to pay for stuff in the city limits of Sutter Creek or only within the county?
I think it includes, I'm pretty sure it includes within the city of Sutter Creek.
I think it's a whole project.
Yes. And that's why we have to put this, you know, I'm just kind of pinpointing and accentuating what's involved in our city. But the whole project is the connection between Amador City and Sutter Creek.
And it's a phased proposal where-
Correct.
Phase is just simple road signage.
Correct.
Let's get that done and see, get ACTC to pay for it.
And-
Paint on the road.
And what we're hoping at this point with, with the minimal cost compared with just doing the street signs, excuse me, the road stencils, that, you know, we're hoping the powers could be go, well, shoot, we're just going to take care of it. Because it would be significantly less.
So, this is just an update to us?
Correct. So, really what, what I think I need to take back to John Gedney and the committee is kind of the city's approval or thumbs up or to be able to move forward, that yes, this, if we're going to design something for Sutter Creek that the council will go with and approve the, the ability to stencil and put in this, on the, on the roads.
Well, I think the-
At these sites.
Really, this, this isn't really an approval item. The council already approved, you know, saying we weren't going to spend any funds, but if ACTC had the funds-
Correct.
We would support the project, but this is just an update, I think, to show you-
Correct.
Their head in.
I, I think at some point, it would be nice to have kind of the blessing of the council to go back and say, yeah, John Gedney moved forward, city of Sutter Creek, you know.
I think the next step is they need to come back with kind of the total of the project and show that it fits within the budget they have. I don't think we want to get into a project that would go over, we'd have to pay out of pocket or-
Right. It seemed like the design part that was in our packet really focused on Sutter Creek. The rest of it is over in Amador City and some other stuff along-
And in the county in between, yes.
So, all of that needs to be brought to John as it's been designed to date and then he'll go do some estimating and then that'll come back and we'll understand who's on the hook for what and make a decision.
I think I just need to, the kind of approval or move forward that says, yes, include that in your plan. You know, the other, you could go and say, no, we want posts and signs up there and then we would go back to scratch and come up with a new design. So, I'm coming to the council with this as our proposal for our part of the project.
It's not really agendized that way, yeah.
I, I think the next step is for ACTC to come back with the plan. John's been involved in this the whole time, so he knows all the pieces.
Right. It's, you know, it looks, it looks like a fine phase one. Get it, get it up to him and let's see what happens.
So, are there any other concerns about the concept of putting on the street stencils or the pedestrian access across Old Highway 49 connecting North Amelia to Amador Road?
I, I can't say that I object or anything, you know, we don't know near enough, but I think adding a crosswalk and choosing, you know, to John's point, Jim's point, Spanish Street kind of as the path, I mean, that, that should probably be an agendized thing that-
Yeah.
People can-
Yeah, you, you-
Have comment on.
Comment is, people live on those streets, you know, they get, need to have a chance to weigh in. But I know we're not at that point yet.
Yeah, it's just conceptual right now.
But I just wanted to go on the record that I think that's important. That there's more, the public has an ample, ample opportunity to, to review anything that's proposed.
The specifics and the color and like, are they orange and green or are they white, you know? Well, yeah, I'm, I, to me, it makes a lot more sense to put paint on the road than signs, but I think there are probably a great deal more questions about if that is where we want a crosswalk. I mean, certainly there are lots of points between the previous palace and where's the next crosswalk to the north? There isn't one, yeah. So, you know, I-
So, are there, are there specific questions? Jim, I made note of your comment about the importance of public input and I agree. Are there, there are other questions that I can take back to the committee from the council?
I don't have any.
Thanks for doing that, Julia.
Thanks, Susan. Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Julia. Okay, anybody else? Mayor and council member reports. We'll start with Susan.
Nothing really specific, but Mike Kirkland, is that?
Kirkley.
Kirkley volunteered his, his experience and then also his girlfriend's son is on the environmental club at the high school and they thought that they might be interested in being volunteers if there's any tree planting or- so I'm just talking to him about that and that's it.
Jim?
One thing at the Fire District meeting, the subject of the measure, Measure P was brought up and that, that part of that, their expectation is for fuel, fire fuel mitigation.
Dan?
I'm reporting what I was, what expectations were presented to me.
You reported it.
I don't have anything.
I don't either. City attorneys report?
No.
Future agenda items? Dan?
Uh, no.
Jim?
No.
Susan?
Yeah, I had one now with regard to the fire fuel mitigation. I would really like to look into hiring the goat herds and I'm not kidding, like, I've seen it happen and-
Hire what?
You hire a goat herd and you bring in the goat herd and they eat all the vegetation. And they, they even have been doing it in Folsom lately.
Think it's prudent to look at all.
Yeah, it seems very effective. And, and I do think as far as Sutter Creek goes, it would be great to get away from burning. I know I came home one night and was like ready to evacuate because the hill on top of where I live was on fire and then leaving the black like that. So, if it's a good solution and-
But-
Reasonable.
Those prescribed burns prevent wildfires, a fire that is out of control. You're talking about the prescribed burning in certain areas is to, is to minimize the chance of a uncontrolled fire.
Yes, I understand that. I just wanted to look into possibly using a different procedure to accomplish the same means. And I was thankful that my neighborhood was not on fire.
I think most of these are done on private property, so it would, right? I mean, the fire department does them, but it's not city property that, that's burned or would be goat shredded. So, you know, that-
Hold up though, like that land trust, I mean, who orders those burns?
Not the city. The land trust, it doesn't belong to the city. That piece of land between the land trust and your neighborhood is privately owned and for sale. They burn across the bypass, that's Allen property, right, Jim? Yeah.
But the fire department is funding it, right?
They, they use those prescribed burns for training purposes.
I get it, but-
And to minimize-
Who pays?
And, and to minimize wildfire hazard.
Who, who pays for it?
The Fire District.
And who?
In some cases, in some cases, a landowner will make a donation to the Fire District.
Okay, yeah, for some reason I was thinking the Fire Department was more intricately combined with this, so I guess I'm wrong with that. Okay, thank you.
So, maybe that sounds like, you know, a potential future agenda item is to have them come down here and talk about what they do and why they do it and what the alternatives might be. Because, I mean, you've raised it several times and it, you know, that those things aren't, you know, pretty to look at, but there is a purpose, but maybe we need a little more education in-
I would love that. And truthfully, it destroys the air quality when they do it and it's always on like these nights that are, can I finish?
Are we kind of getting off?
Well, future agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would probably be on their agenda though, because we don't tell them whether or not to do them.
We can invite them here to educate us as a future agenda item. What's so hard about that?
And certainly, we could possibly work with them.
So, I did give you an information report, which is a draft of the letter to the Water Board, which is due December 15th. We're giving feedback this week, but I wanted you guys to see it. The mayor pointed out, it's actually a pretty good review of the entire ARSA system. So, I hope you guys take a look at it.
Yeah.
I, I have it up here on the screen, actually, just real quick. It was kind of interesting going to the Water Board. Nobody seemed to have a good idea what the actual diagram and who was connected to what. And I think this is pretty accurate. We, we went, collected it, I think, I think Ione had a slightly different picture and- so again, I think the image is quite helpful. Especially when you get down here to Henderson and where CDCR connects and where Ione's flows can go. The city of Ione and their residents go to their secondary plant and it gets put on what they call the town fill. They spray on the town fill. And it also goes to some ponds. You know, and their plans, they're talking about potentially connecting that to the tertiary plant, which would require more capacity for treatment at tertiary plant and again, more, more disposal potentially. What we're seeing right now with our water balance analysis is, you know, ARSA water going to the tertiary plant, going to the golf course. Fits, it works. Sometimes in a dry year, we don't have as much water as they need. But with us and Mule Creek, we could definitely have years where we have too much water if Mule Creek is not using their other disposal. And I think that's going to be kind of the outcome of this exercise we're doing with the Water Board. And then the other point is, is Ione is approving developments that are going beyond the capacity of their treatment plant. And also disposals. So, additional disposal is going to be needed somewhere. Jackson Rancheria owns a thing called Woodward Bottom. There's also another alfalfa field near the, near the plant. But without bringing more of that disposal online, I think there's definite challenge. These developments, you know, they're looking at so many homes per year, but in kind of five to 10 years, we have a, I think we have a problem. But again-
Then it'll come back on Sutter Creek because they're-
Well, it's, the challenge that we've had over the years is this balance of, what do you do in a very wet year? What do you do in a dry year? And then now it's, how can Ione develop and still take our water? How can Sutter Creek development and even have more wastewater? Where would that go? In this letter, we are not forecasting much growth. We're, we're taking the historic rate, projecting it forward. But if we ever did have a gold rush or a project like that, you know, it exacerbates the problem.
How, how does this or does this inform your current work to try to figure out our own plant?
I think it really says in kind of the next five to 10 years, Ione needs a solution, we need a solution. And we need to be talking to each other or we're going to, we're going to have angry people again because it, it needs to be a planned solution, right? And, you know, if we do nothing and they have these 1,500 homes come online and connect them to the tertiary plant, they're going to say, we don't, we don't need your water, ARSA, or we don't want as much. Or we need to sign up more disposal facilities. And so, we really need the Rancheria on board or some other people on board. So, you know, again, I, I think it's, it's an important tool for us to look at. On the Mule Creek side, you know, they have quite a large reservoir, they have quite large spray fields. And they're not on this permit right now. And so, you know, again, I, I hope the Water Board is, is going to be looking at all this and saying, you know, that they have to use those spray fields to help, help the balance work out. So, you know, and then we have our own spray fields, which in the past, we, we have expanded them. You know, they, we could look to try to expand them some more. Anyways, I, I just wanted to point this out. Hopefully you guys read it. I think there's a lot of good data in there.
It also adds, you know, there's a money factor, Dan, because Ione needs to, if they choose to do this, connect their plants, somebody needs to pay for that. And right now, you know, we're there watering that plant, so should we be funding their improvement? If we do, then we'd want to have a seat there for a long time. You know, so it's a, there's a lot of factors. I also, I think it's a great primer. I hope everyone read it. A big difference from the last couple of years of all these reports is how you guys clarified the I and I in the wet years. And then also, sorry, something else fell out of my head. Now, is that reflected, obviously, the old Corolo's study? The numbers are off due to that miscalculation, right? Sort of? That's how we got the $85 million plant?
I, I'll, I'll give you guys some more information later. I, I have a lot of questions about this report, so I'm, I'm kind of confused about much of it. So, I need, I need to get some, some more information about, from them.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't read the whole thing. It's dense. I mean, and it's, and it's complicated.
Yeah.
From my-
I just feel like there's some places we could make it a lot clearer for the reader, so.
Yeah.
And I have questions of how they got to certain assumptions, so.
I think the other thing, at a high level, there's a lot of unnecessary backwash going through these plants. So, AWA is going to route theirs, I believe, to, to a mining operation down there, which will give Ione more capacity. And then the tertiary plant, the backwash is really high. They're saying it's like 18% of the flow. And if, so if they can optimize that, that also gives them more capacity. And that's where we get to this five to 10-year timeframe by everybody being more efficient, basically.
Did the population projections for Ione increase in this or did they use the current rate? Like to the, to the tune of the-
This is our, this is our letter. Ione's doing their own letter, so I haven't really seen their projections yet, I don't think.
Well, I think part of Ione's response was attached at the back. Well, I think part of I own's response was attached at the back. Right?
Yeah, they are writing their own letter and so does CDCR.
Any other questions on this? Okay. Then we're going to go into closed session.